Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this evening's city council meeting. We're going to get started. We have a lot on our agenda and hopefully we can get out of here at a decent time. I've been reminded by a number of people that the shortest city council meeting in two years was held in my absence at the last.
Thank you very much.
If I had a call for a police officer to take you people out. We'll try to get through this agenda.
Well, I also said it was because you didn't give us anything important to do in your absence.
The reason the meeting was so short is she didn't have somebody to retort to on everything that I said, so that's the reason it was shortened.
I think we should move on.
Is that in form of a motion, Mr. Thomas? We're glad you're all here.
We motioned that she was mayor.
I don't know why he's sitting there and I'm in the chair again.
In keeping with our tradition, we will start our meeting with our moment of silent reflection. And then I'm going to call upon Gene Thorne to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. That's what happens when you get recognized and honored, you get to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So a moment of silence first. Gene?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And the first order of business is to recognize our guests. And our very distinguished guests this evening, who many of us are very well familiar with and acclimated to, are Gene and Sandy Thorne. Both please come up. I can stand in the middle or Gene, whatever you want to do. I've got one of these for each of you, but I'm only going to read it one time. How about that? Should I get my glasses over here? Back in Hills, they haven't had any glasses. All right. This is a mayor's proclamation. Whereas Gene Thorne is a proud Buchanan Upsher community resident, although you started out in Niles, Ohio, I read that on the mark, yeah, living in Tallonsville, who for many years was employed as a wildlife biologist and managed our West Virginia State Wildlife Center after studying wildlife biology at WVU and then that other place, Penn State University. It's Nilla County for some people anyway. And whereas Sandy Thorne also is a proud BU resident and wife of Gene Thorne, who has volunteered at our Wildlife Center for many years. And whereas for many years, Gene and Sandy Thorne have delighted audiences all over our region with their historical reenactments of Samuel and Charity Pringle, the earliest frontier inhabitants of our community, including many presentations right here in Buchanan and most recently excellent performances given during the rededication of our city seal mural on December 2, 2016, and more recently during our city's inaugural Fall Fest on September 30, 2017. And whereas Gene and Sandy Thorne have brought much acclaim and positive notoriety to our BU community through their historical reenactments and storytelling about life during the frontier days here in Buchanan that has resulted in a renewed focus upon our local history and arts. And whereas the Thorns' selfless and outstanding service and contributions to our community are indicative of our citizen ownership in and respect and support for our community activities and represent the very finest example of our high quality of life enjoyed by our residents here. And whereas our city is very proud of two of its most accomplished citizens who steadfastly epitomized positive thinking, dedication, and accomplishment while serving as exceptional role models for everyone in our BU community, and now desires to recognize Gene and Sandy Thorne for their outstanding contributions to our community by bestowing upon them our city's Ambassador's Award. Now therefore, I, as mayor of the city of Buchanan pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me, do hereby proclaim Thursday, November 2, 2017, to be Gene and Sandy Thorne Day throughout our city of Buchanan. To further memorialize the Thorns' devotion to and affinity for their BU community, I further now hereby bestow upon them the Buchanan Ambassador Award, thus being but our city's 19th recipients and honorees of this most prestigious honor and award. Appropriately, I direct the installation of a permanent placard upon the Ambassador's Bench on East Main Street in front of our city's Stacker Youth Center to permanently honor the Thorns, the bench bearing the inscription and legend, "The Ambassador's Bench honoring those who selflessly dedicated their lives to the service, promotion, and advancement of Buchanan." I further urge all of our residents to greet and recognize our city's most honored citizens, Gene and Sandy Thorne, along with their family, friends, and all members of our city government family during their most special day, given under my hand and official seal of the city of Buchanan, the second day of November 2017, signed by me as mayor. And I've got one of these in the deluxe, 98 cents.
It's been a long night, turn it on.
Are you good? Guys, if you've never seen the Thorns' Pringles reenactment, and you do other shtick too, but the Sam and Charity Pringle stuff is just, I mean, I've probably seen it 10 or 12 times now over the years, and it gets better every time. You spin a better yarn every time you tell the story.
The bear gets bigger.
That's right, the bear gets bigger. I had all of my grandchildren were at the Fall Fest presentation, the two older ones especially, the eight and six children. They were sitting there on the hay bale leaning in, you know, there was average pepults. There really bears around here? I said, well, not too many right now, but a couple hundred years ago, maybe we would add a few more, right? We thank you for all you do and one of these days soon when we get the rest rooms done in theater, we want to have you come and do another reenactment some evening when the state fire marshal says, yeah, you guys can go ahead and do whatever you want to whenever you want to. So thank you a bunch, we appreciate it.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, yeah, let's recognize our college students and then we're going to hear from Gene Wells about his new expanded venture into Java, right, Gene? But first, we'll start up here in the front row. If you guys from my BWL class would stand and face the camera and tell us your name, hometown, and your major course of study at Wesleyan, that would be terrific.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Polygornades and I come from Athens, Greece, and I'm studying Business Management at Wesleyan. Thank you.
My name is Miguel Jareño. I'm from Spain and I'm studying Sports Management.
My name's Gabe Bonilla from Brooksville, Florida, and I'm studying Sports Business.
My name's Sam Ross from Coleman, West Virginia, and I'm studying Business Administration.
I'm John Centron. I'm from Guayama, Puerto Rico, but currently live in Pennsylvania, and I'm a Business Admin major.
My name is Riley Metz. I am from Hurricane, West Virginia, and I am currently studying Business Administration.
Sean Cliff. I am from Syracuse, New York, and I'm a senior at West Virginia Wesleyan studying Sports Business.
I'm Austin Keane. I'm from Largo, Florida, and I'm studying Accounting.
Melissa Sevold from Weston, West Virginia, studying Sociology.
I'm Seth Stokoe from Buchanan, West Virginia, studying Business Administration.
I'm Count from South Korea, and my major is Business.
Is that all of our students? Terrific. It's excellent having you all here. If you have any questions during the course of the meeting, don't be shy about asking. We'll try to address any questions you might have, but it's always great to have our Wesleyan students here at the meeting. Next up is Gene Wells, who's going to tell us a little bit about Mountain Roaster Coffee and his expansion, looking for a new place here in Buchanan. I think he's brought samples for us too. I didn't know he had the Keurig thing, so man, you're going to have to even further.
Before I get started on the coffee, almost everyone knows I've sold my business here on Main Street, and that's why I really wanted to come before you tonight and say thank you. Thank you to this council, to all the other businesses that we have on Main Street. This town has become a destination for a lot of my out-of-town customers, and they come here, they make a day trip out of it. A lot of them actually come in and make a weekend out of it because of the community that we have here. So for everyone involved in making this community as united as it is, I want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure doing business on Main Street with everyone, and I want to tell you, well done. We've created a welcome town experience in a small town. So with that said, I'm not going anywhere anytime soon. We do have a coffee business. We are definitely seeking a larger location and close to downtown as we can get. We've just finished doubling our production output this summer and expanded into the K-Cup market. This K-Cup is 100% recyclable and reusable. You can reuse it up to 10 times. You can pop it open, dry it out, and add fresh coffee. Our little roastery in Buchanan here has shipped to over 20 states so far. We are shipping all the time, and we were just selected as the in-room coffee service for the state of West Virginia Parks and Recreation. So all the customers coming into our state will be tasting Mountain Roaster Coffee in their in-room service. The state is switching over to the best of the local products, is why they've selected Mountain Roaster. What makes our product different? We source sustainable products, responsibly sourced, is what I like to say. We use fair trade organics and we use direct trade. Direct trade products that we use are purchased from farms and areas that I have actually visited on missions trips, going down and making connections with farmers and picking them up and buying their coffee and tasting it in the country. The second quality that we use in buying our coffee is the cupping score. It has to be a premium product. Another item that makes our company better than most is what I like to say is we give back. We donate over 10% of our profits back to third world countries and farmers, single farms, you know, single parent farms. Most of the coffee production is done by women in all these countries. We work with sustainable businesses and sustainable practices. So a hobby has turned into a statewide venture, and that's why I'm here. Feel free to take a sample on your way out tonight, definitely reuse it and recycle it, please.
Gene, if folks want to, until we get you downtown here someplace, he was just telling me he needs a place where he can get semi trucks into, we're going to start working on that. How do we contact you to procure coffee right now?
Well, of course, it's at the Bike Shop. Fishhawk Acres has it for sale. Do Re Mi has it here in town. It's being served in CJ Maggie's. It's being served in Fishhawk Acres. And then you can reach me online. We have a wonderful website where we're shipping everything out. And we have a local pickup. You can select local pickup and we'll drop it off at either at your office or pick it up at the Bike Shop or somewhere.
The website, is it Mountain Roaster?
MountainRoaster.com.
Okay, there you have it, MountainRoaster.com. Gene, how'd you first get started? You said it was a hobby?
Yeah, I started in the coffee business out of necessity after going to Costa Rica on a biking trip. I biked my way across Costa Rica and we stayed at plantations, coffee plantations, and they roasted coffee over open fire. So we came home and reproduced that coffee and started giving it away as Christmas gifts and it turned into a small business.
And how long did you have the Bike Shop?
We had the Bike Shop for 19 and a half years.
Wow. Don't blink, right?
Exactly.
The guy you sold it to is very pleasant.
Yeah, he is a good guy. My grills, when they come up from North Carolina, they always fire coffee.
I have to send it to my kids.
Well, Gene, on behalf of the chamber, we thank you for, you thanked us, but it's businesses like you and our members that make this town what it is. And you've put us on the map in a lot of ways, and there's people all over the state and all over the region that know who we are because of the products and the quality that you've provided here for so many years. So I think we owe you a thank you for what you've done for this town. So thank you.
Well, that block, when I first came to Buchanan 35 years ago, or almost 35 years ago, when you had Home Hardware and Shannon's in that block, that was the most vibrant block part of downtown, right there because of everybody's coming and going. And then when Shannon's kind of, you know, went a different direction and Home Hardware closed, we didn't have quite that vibrancy until you opened your place and then Artistry on Main opens, and that block again is one of the star wars downtown. There's just so much activity. Our whole downtown is vibrant in no small part because of you and yours doing your bit. So I echo Robbie's sentiments, we thank you.
Thanks.
We'll have you back again soon after we find you that thousand square feet you need to do to expand, right?
Don't forget to taste.
Yeah. Do you want to introduce us to your better half and business partner back there?
Hi, Sarah.
Oh, I didn't even see her. Hi, Sarah.
Hello, Sarah.
All right, guys, we'll have you back and only because we want more free samples. Draft and government, the whole bit, it's all about us. Thanks for coming, we appreciate you both. You don't have to stay. Mr. Thomas would like to leave himself. Next up is Brian Shreves, our Upsher County Office of Emergency Management. He's going to tell us about some exciting opportunities. Brian, welcome to the city council.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for allowing me to speak at the city council. I'm here to let the city council know that my office, in conjunction with Doral Cutright and Iowa One Director, wrote a grant and won a grant through Homeland Securities. It is a law enforcement-based grant. And what we wrote for were dual-band encrypted radios for all of our law enforcement officers. And what that allows them to do is have one radio to talk on multiple bands and have encryption capabilities to where if they need to talk privately with each other or with the comm center, they have the ability to do that. And when I wrote this grant, I just didn't write it for the county. I also included the city officers in this grant. When we were awarded this grant, it's going to come down to where the city officers will receive 11 dual-band encrypted portables, programming, training, and everything for the city officers as well as our county officers. We did this to, for the protection of our officers, whether they're city officers or county officers, they all do the same job, and we need to protect them all. And it's going to come down to where the equipment that the city is going to receive is approximately $70,000 to $72,000 worth of free radio equipment through this grant.
That's amazing.
And all that we ask, when I've been dealing with Chief Gregory, is the single-band radios that they have now, they're going to give back to us, we're going to reprogram them and give them to the fire departments and EMS throughout the county that don't have the interoperable radio system. So we're not only helping the county and the city police, we're also helping the first responders in the county.
That's great.
But we just wanted to let you guys know that, you know, we did include the city in this grant. And I signed the paperwork yesterday, and the order will be placed. And once the order's placed, it'll be about two weeks for the radios to come in, be programmed, and I'll look to see the radios out in force within the next month or so.
That's excellent. Thank you, Brian. When you talk about dual band, that means one of the bands is the standard non-encrypted and the other one is the encrypted.
No, sir. What it is, is actually we have two bands. We have the Interoperable Network, which is the state sirens network, which is, it is a system that when you key up, you're not guaranteed to be on the same frequency every time. It's through the whole state. Then they have the regular police frequency, but what they'll be able to do is you'll have both frequencies plus whichever frequency you're on, the comm center will be able to tell them to go to encryption, and they'll just turn a button to a channel, and scanner land will not be able to hear what they're saying. So if they have sensitive information, say involving a child, it will never be put out with the scanner anymore. And to do that right now, the city officers would have to carry two portable radios to be totally interoperable. And you know as well as I do, they carry way too much stuff on their belt now.
Absolutely.
So we just decided that, you know, this grant was available and we were going to lump everybody into it.
Wow. So what standards or best practices are there for going to encryption or just staying there?
Well, legally, you cannot encrypt dispatch or monitor frequencies. Like, if you're a police officer and your base frequency is this, you cannot encrypt it. You have to be able to go to a secondary channel that's encrypted. Your main dispatch channel has to be open. So it's going to be a separate channel that they'll just be able to go to on their own. And Mr. Cutright from the Iowa One Center is going to sit down and write a policy for that that's going to affect the Iowa One Center and the city and the county officers. And this will also allow our city officers to talk to our state police and our county officers on one radio now. So we're going to have all the law enforcement be able to talk to each other instead of, hey, call me on the phone, or yeah, they're all going to be able, one radio at one time.
Great. That's outstanding.
That could save somebody's life, you know.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Even one of our officers.
Yes. And I've been in contact with Matt Gregory, and he's tickled to death about this. So we just want to let you guys know that it's coming down the pike, and as soon as we get it implemented, I'll let you guys know.
We appreciate your excellent grant writing more than words can express. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You guys have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's a switch, man. Yeah. I don't have anybody else on the sign-up sheet tonight who has asked to address council. Is there anyone that wanted to address council that I've not called upon? We'll move into Department Board Report, it's easy for me to say. And first up is our Public Works Director, Jerry Arns. Jerry?
Good evening, folks. You're not erstwhile, Mike.
He called me erstwhile this morning, though. It's been a long day.
But he does look dapper.
It's alarming.
Wow, sure. Dapper, not fat.
He likes the last meeting better.
No, I really liked it. It was a great meeting.
Move on, Jerry.
I'm the director of reporting. Just let everybody know construction is set to begin on Monday, November the 6th on the West Virginia DOH McDonald's Turn Lane Project.
What's the date again?
Well, next Monday, the 6th.
November the 6th. The Turn Lane at McDonald's.
That is what the information that we have received. So just putting that out there for everyone. You may want to change your travel plans through that.
What you're asking on the timeline, Jerry?
Do what?
What's the timeline?
I'm not even going to guess it. The original project is at 18 miles. But again, there's no detour route, so they'll keep one lane open. It'll be similar to the, I would imagine, similar to the utility work that was just performed up there. But again, that's a West Virginia DOH project, so it's on their schedule, and we know that there's been multiple postponements of the project. So again, just a warning, it could happen Monday. That's the information again. Brad Hopkins and I attended a two-day training course on designing pedestrian-friendly facilities for accessibility in Bellstown on the 19th and 20th of last month, and I will tell you, it was an eye-opening experience for us. And we'll be having some exercises here in Buchanan. Actually, they took us out one of those streets and we were putting wheelchairs, blindfolded, and giving long cans, and got to face exactly what people with disabilities, the challenges they face in navigating sidewalks, crosswalks, and paragras, things that we take for granted everywhere. So Brad and I are going to put together a similar kind of training for both our street parks folks and CJ and much, I think it'd be a good thing for council people, individuals in council that would want to participate. Because again, it is, it really changed my thought process on a lot of things. You have design standards to follow, and sometimes you wonder why, you know, what's a quarter-inch cross slope? If we get a half-inch cross slope, what does that do for you? If you're in a manual wheelchair trying to navigate, you notice a quarter-inch cross slope on a sidewalk and it draws you into the street. And so, you know, like I said, I was really taken aback as to just how challenging, you know, some of the disabilities are in navigating, just in our normal lives, what we have to do, what these folks have to go through. So more to come on that. I've met several times with MicroLogic about the sound system on Main Street. We're looking at possible rewiring our light poles to eliminate some of the electrical issues we're experiencing and to accommodate the installation of the sound system. Again, conduits are pretty full from the current lighting system. We've had some issues in the past. One, there's not very good blueprints on the whole system on Main Street. And since the installation of the new LED lights, we can downsize the wiring in those conduits quite a bit. So we're looking at doing that in conjunction with running the sound system. It means we possibly may not have sound by Christmas time on Main Street, and it's going to be kind of an inconvenience. It's going to be, we'll have to do one side at a time, which means we have to lay the light poles all down on one side of the street, pull the new wire in, and then reinstall the light poles. So it may be a two or three-day occurrence that there won't be lights to one side of the street at a time. But ultimately, it will be a much better system in doing so. And again, you know, with that system, we'll be able to expand in the future with possible video locations and just a whole host of things that we could do with that fiber once it's in there. I've participated in meetings with our consulting engineer, city personnel, and ACT representatives in the planning to provide water for the pipeline construction. We'll be presenting a plan and an agreement for authorization proceed at the November 9th Water Board meeting. Again, there's a lot of potential water upgrades that can come out of this project, so once that's approved through Water Board, I'll be reporting to council is what we're looking at doing there. But it's somewhere in the neighborhood of a couple million dollars worth of infrastructure improvements. Supervisor have nothing new to report under that. The Water Department continues to work on residential meter replacement and rededicating a four-inch water line on Myrna Street. They've been assisting the contractor at the Victoria Hill Water Storage Tank Project and draining the basins at the water plant to inspect paddles on the paddle drives. Sewer Department, Razzin spoke with Nikki Davis from REIT, and the board has voted to decline the grant, and Nikki's offered assistance to rewrite the grant for the upcoming year. I've got to call into her, expect a call back tomorrow. She actually emailed me and said she was out of the office this afternoon, but she was trying to get in touch with me tomorrow. I've got to call into her to see just what, you know, what the indigestion was with our grant application. And again, it's, the board has, the board's declined, it still would have to go to the cabinet, and then from there, the official, usually, once the board makes a decision, they very seldom ever overrule it. That's the first one in several years that we might got awarded. So I'm just interested to know, you know, what about the project that wasn't, maybe didn't score as high as some of the other projects. What was the grant for, Jerry? That was for the composting project at the sewer treatment plant. So it's for some equipment and then go to there to kick that. And again, we'll still continue in that direction. It's just going to slow us down somewhat from what we were intending to do. do. Again, the major step of having the sewer slugs reclassified into something that we can apply within the city was a huge undertaking and accomplishment in and of itself. So like I said, it's just a minor setback, but we'll get there. Projects completed, lease and drive extension phase two, and the clarifier is 100% complete and in service again. Can't speak highly enough about city employees and the work they do and the in-house work done by them. Thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars are saved each year just from these guys taking things on their own and doing it in-house. So kudos to those guys. Plant work, graphic controls has sent equipment for a telemetry trial and under ongoing projects to the Swisher Street replacement of Culver. They did some test excavating up there, and they're working on it. Again, I got a call today, and Raz actually talked to the individual up there. They're in a higher flow situation up there. In order to finish this, they have to actually plug the sewer line, and they can't do that in the high-flow conditions because it'll cause backups. So once the, once it dries up just a little bit, they'll be back on project and getting wrapped up. But they've not moved out for the winter. They will be back before spring.
You just knew I was gonna ask you about this at the end, so I'm glad you said it.
Well, I know you're scared.
Growing up over there, I've had several phone calls about that, so.
Yep, the mayor's home. The mayor of Myrna.
Oh, the mayor.
I see nothing.
You're the mayor of Bead Street.
Stormwater crews will be dispatched to create a deficiency grade priority list. They're still working on, I think, alley stormwater improvements and extensive research for stormwater system on Henry Street. And they've obtained the right-of-way and actually have started some work up there on Henry Street. And upcoming, our equipment, they've purchased a couple of computers at the sewer plant and a multi-use printer, and they're looking to purchase an additional sandbox to improve the line, improve workflow under the waste department and the secured financing for the road tractor. And we expect delivery in the next 30 days. Also, we've been approved, the mayor signing the financing for the motors to start that motor program. Hopefully, all goes well, and somewhere around the first of the year, we can implement that. I've nothing new to report under the street department. We're still working on the ADA improvements over at the park and the projects I reported on the previous meeting. Under engineering, CSX Railroad water line replacement. Jay's attempting to request a refund, a partial full-to-be development for the permit fees. You remember, we went through a permit process to go under the railroad out at the open road, and the information we got from utilities was not accurate. So we were unable to complete that project, but we had to pay a permit fee to CSX, so we're trying to get that money back. Knollwood Development, water system improvements. Currently preparing the preliminary drawings for review approval by the affected parties, and we'll begin working on the right-of-way documents at a later date. And the water line replacement project, this is something Tom knows a little bit about that thing. Water Department, complete exploratory excavation. Has determined that its proposed water line route is acceptable. Indications are that the proposed alignment will work. Gateway West Engineering is in survey. That's their resolution in their council packet in regards to that. Anticipate receiving a notice to proceed within two weeks from the West Virginia DOH. Again, engineering and surveying phases of the project. Deadline for completion is now February 28, 2018. And again, that's just for the engineering and the survey portion of that project. And then there's another grant for construction of the same thing. CRS Community Visit, five-year review by ISO will be held on December 4, 2017. Currently gathering necessary information and documents to submit prior to the site visit. And Gateway West Phase 3, intent to apply, currently working on the next round of DOH funding applications for the next construction phase of Gateway West Transportation Alternative Project. And the Elizabeth J. Benson Downstate River Walk Trail Extension Number 4, we had applied for that grant as well, and it was declined. So we're reapplying next year for the very same project on that, and that's the extension from Marion Street up to the old siding that went into the Moore's Building.
Ah.
We have a female lot there, so that would get us that far. That's about $150,000 project we're applying for there. And currently working on the next round of funding for that for the fourth phase of the River Walk Trail Project. And that's all I have, man, in my report. Any questions?
Questions, Jerry? New flag poles, we talked about this earlier today at Jolton. We hope to have those installed in time for Veterans Day.
That's the pitch.
Even the one out at...
There's another, there's a little more.
The one at the cemetery.
Circumstances are a little more difficult.
I'm seeing.
Yep, yep.
Although the approximate 200 flags for the following were installed yesterday after then. Any questions for Jerry? Thanks, Jerry. Tell all the guys we appreciate them all, more than words can express. That takes us to Hamby Jenkins, our financier.
Maybe he's gonna lose his voice.
Seized control yet again.
Okay. Your bank balances and general fund money market and checking for...
She gave us his.
Up top October 30th was $798,261. You have a CD for $82,720. Stockard Youth Center CD is $150,516. Municipal Stabilization Fund, $510,728. And Historic Landmark Savings remains at $3,019. Expenses for the month of October were more than revenues by $7,272. But during that month, we expended $83,000 in paving for Thurman Avenue and West Lincoln Street. I've sent out, I've sent the first filing requirements to the West Virginia Public Service Commission and did the proper notifications by newspaper regarding the sewer rate increase. Today, we received a tariff back from the PSC for the mayor's signature, and those have been signed.
That's true.
Yeah. We have 31 days, however, though, after that adoption, that we have to still send the affidavit of post-adoption in the newspaper publication and posting of information and lobbying. And we've been placing that information on utility bills. A note on there about the sewer rates, so people are aware of them. Next Wednesday, City Hall is gonna undergo a pretty large upgrade of our key software, which handles our billing and payroll and general ledger. The upgrade's gonna take several hours. So during that time, we're gonna be a little crippled with information that we can get to customers. We can only take manual payments, and we can answer some general questions, but mostly, we may have to call you back if you wanna make a payment with a credit card. We can't do that. So that's intervention for the public. Then this week, ARCS 26201 presented a donation, $5,000 to go towards the creation and installation of new signage at the theater. Funds were raised from the community, and by purchasing letters that go on the marquee, donors' names will go on the back of those letters that say requested. So we thank ARCS 26201 for that donation. We received that today, actually, the check. The other thing I need to report on is, every year, I have to perform a community outreach to our residents that live in the floodplain. It's information regarding flooding and flood insurance, and I'm sending a copy of the flood map with that information. And those will go out to about 500 residents. So if you get a call, that's part of our CRS community rating to maintain that Class 8 rating system so that we can continue to give people a 10% reduction on their flood insurance. That's all I have. Until later in the agenda, you'll see the RFP technical.
Just to be clear, next Wednesday, we are not closing City Hall. And we think that it's gonna be three, four hours of our system being compromised. But if you wanna come pay your utility bill, probably by afternoon, you'll be...
Late afternoon.
Just a little glitch, hiccup, isn't it?
We shifted off any shut-offs because of that. So we've kinda delayed those as well, because many people can't come and pay right of way.
Sure.
But that's no reason not to pay your bills.
Question?
We'll get to the next week.
May I be under taxes? I'm looking under percentage year-to-date budget. If we have two months left in this half a year, so we're about 33, four months or 33% in. But our ad valorem taxes are at 60%. Is that just people paying ahead, or?
Well, I was gonna report at the next meeting because I wanna kinda look at those and see, because there'll probably be a budget revision there. But the state sent us some money through a tax incentive program, and we actually got about $30,000 from the state because of the reduction, the tax loss that many communities lost in this last tax year. So they actually sent us $36,000 that we need to probably... If you remember in the budget sessions, I told you that we had lost some tax base.
Yeah.
Well, you may not recall, but it's, we lost some tax base, so we had to reduce it a little bit because of that. And I think they're trying to make that difference up, so.
I mean, city business licenses, we're at 120% of budget.
Yeah, but, you know, that's, you only get about $16,000 in city business lines.
And that's just once a year.
Yes. Yeah, they're finished.
Okay. Thank you.
But the 36, 37,000 she's talking about, that's really a tremendous habit.
That's, 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 you don't, they don't normally give you money. You gotta beg for it.
I mean, recognizing that the money that we had that was unencumbered in our capital ally, the whole year was only $52,000, to get almost $37,000 on top of that, that's a substantial event.
Mayor Jerry Arnold is sitting back there dreaming about what he can do with his share of that.
He's got the fire chief, too. He might help.
Oh, the fire chief. Oh, yeah. I see.
You guys better work it out before Matt Gregory.
Well, chat rumor.
It looked like you were getting ready to leave. Were you gonna do the RFP on strategic issues?
It's under strategic, unless you wanted that now.
Well, if you're gonna, you're sticking around.
Yeah.
Thanks, Hamby. City Attorney Tom Oney.
We've reached that point where two weeks ago, we were adjourning, so. Just, just by way of making sure council is up to date on some of the things that we've been working on. The first settlement check on the compact back home matter has been received and deposited. This, that first settlement check represents a payout for the second cut. The first cut, we were having a little discussion about, and I spoke with Jerry, and we're gonna gather some data to forward on to the adjuster to establish why we're entitled to pull the first cut as well. On the Gerald Brown case, that'll be going to mediation at some point within the next 30 days or so as well. There is a, I think our hand was strengthened a little bit in that case by the State Supreme Court in a recent decision to hand it down regarding the retroactivity of certain statutes. And so I, it certainly can't hurt, you know, it was an employment discrimination case, not a, not dealing with the exact statute that the city is defending against in this matter. But the case in question certainly doesn't hurt us. And other than that, it's been advising departments on their matters, matters, many of which Jerry discussed. In particular, I'll be spending the remainder of this weekend, reviewing the Water Board agreement with the Atlantic Coast Pipeline for their installation of the booster station and a early detection monitor on the Buchanan River between Sego and Hampton, which is where, which is where I grew up, between Sego and Hampton, right near the Buchanan River. And so that will be, that will be happening. Of note, it's worth noting, and it's in the, it's in a draft agreement, which is not confidential. Right. But I also picked it up secondarily through conversations with friends I have at Dominion, that the, that we can expect construction of our portion of the Atlantic Coast Pipeline in approximately October of 2018. So that's when we, you know, just as a community, be ready to expect that's when our section of it will be, will be worked on. Now, that's probably subject to delay, as these projects always are. The project, as you may have noticed in the news recently, received its final certificate of approval from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, which is, which is its governing body. There's some final permits from the state for water quality, 404B, I'm sorry, not 404B, just 404 water quality permits, and some other environmental matters that need to be addressed at the state level. But all indications are that Dominion's, Dominion and their partners have been dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's on making sure they meet the rules. And, and so it, it does appear that the Atlantic Coast Pipeline will be coming through approximately a year from now. And then construction will probably last a matter of, you know, a few weeks or so, you would take. And then it'll be covered up, and we'll hopefully never know it's there again, except for the, sorry. So with that, I'll take any questions you have. I have other matters that are on the agenda for later. But if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Tom? We've actually been told that they plan on starting construction about the first March.
They may, they may start at some point along the line.
They wanna be able to test the line about the first of October. And we're, we're in the process of fast-tracking what we need to do to be cooperative with that venture.
And that's, and that's why the agreement contemplates construction, at least of the, of the water facility improvement part of it, in October. And I wouldn't imagine that they can't do the, you know, they need that done before.
Yeah. They wanna be able to, we're providing the water so that they can test their big line.
Pressure, yeah.
And they wanna be able to do that about the first of October of 2018. So that's, we're gonna, we're gonna do our best to help them get the...
And they are funding, and they are funding the project. Stands to be noted, this is not going to cost the city anything, right?
We are essentially getting a $2 million grant from Atlantic Coast Pipeline to make permanent improvements to our water system.
That'll affect, that'll especially affect the Brushy Fork area and everything, really, within the, within the pathway.
Our entire water system that services the entire county bump year will be greatly enhanced as a consequence of this effort.
Right. The infrastructure put in place is not just a one-time disposable improvement. It's actually infrastructure that can be used and relocated. Some of it can be relocated to areas where we have deficiencies right now in our water system. And some of the, some of the components of the project are actually upgrades that the water, the water customers would be taxed to, to, within kind of a general maintenance, kind of thing with the water. So it's, it is a, as far as from the water department's perspective and the water customer's perspective, it is a very positive outcome with this project.
So, and the way I translate that is that because of disagreement with Atlantic Coast Pipelines, our... Pipelines, our municipal water customers will not face a rate increase to do the things that this project will do. It'll increase the life of the system as well.
I think that's mostly correct.
Close enough, all right, close enough.
Any other, any questions for Tom? He's gonna come back in a little bit. Next up is our, is he equally erstwhile, Katie? Tim Townsend?
I'll have to look up erstwhile. I hope I know what that means. And I'm, I'm gonna be reading to kids. You better learn what erstwhile.
I just want to comment on students. It's a, it's a bigger group than usual and definitely, as usual, nice international mix. And, you know, I know your families are proud of you and the community's proud of you. Be careful because this community grows on you. Some of you might not ever leave.
It happened to this guy about sixty years ago.
Forty-seven.
Give us good luck in all your pursuits. All the, any, all the businesses that you are talked about going into, all are going to require lots of coffee. I just want to remind you of that. That's what keeps it going. Tom, you're from between Sago and Hampton?
Yeah.
Grew up, I grew up between Pomona and Cucamonga, so, or what, that's where.
California.
I know right where you're talking about. Yeah. There's a lot of people there. So it's good to see everybody. I'll try to keep it short. I'm, I'm gonna definitely keep it short because I'm gonna have Joey Baxter, training officer, come up and talk a little bit tonight too. But last time we spoke, we had not received our materials from the Commission on Fire Service Accreditation. We now have, and really great stuff. I mean, there is a lot there. There are, for instance, eighty-six core competencies that we have to accomplish even to be considered to go in the accreditation processes. It's gonna be very arduous. The step, they tell us, step number one is to build your team. And, and I think we have a very competent team, resilient team. I mean, we've got a guy who, as long as I let him get his hour and a half of really rigorous exercise every day, every shift, you know, he'll give me as many hours as he's not on calls doing any kind of staff work. And I got a guy who's one of the greatest family guys I've ever seen in the fire services, so dedicated to his family. He'll see the importance of this for the future. His wife's a, from here, times a couple of hundred years, her family, and actually is too. I've got a guy who, I always describe him like this, he could take a C-130 and put it at the airport, fill it full of fuel, put him in it in a parachute, and I don't even know if he can skydive, but anyway, put him in, put him in that C-130 parachute, drop him at any fire department in the entire world or the entire nation. And this guy would land, hit the ground running. He could land him in an abandoned firehouse with no, no gas in the engine and no water in the water tank, and he, he would know how to build a fire department. So very proud of that part of my team. And he likes coffee too, by the way. In fact, I'm from California where all the fluffy foo-foo stuff happens, and I was just a Maxwell House drinker my whole life. I came here and this particular guy taught me the fine art of drinking coffee, actually through genes, fine beans. So now I'm a cold-pressed coffee guy. I make, I make my fellow Californians proud now. But I've got another young fireman who has already been a manager somewhere, he came into fire service. He, he could go any direction of business that he would ever pursue, or in our service or in any kind of service. And then I got the two new guys. One's an open book and the other one's planning a family. So that's not even to mention the volunteers and their instruct, structural experience, firefighting experience, army guys, reserve guys, retired army, city workers, fantastic. So even though this is gonna be crazy, crazy arduous, we'll be able to do it. But we're not gonna be able to do it in six months or one year. In fact, it says eighteen to twenty-four months. We talked about those timelines before. So I think we'll still be first in this, in this state. The next thing it says to do is prepare an honest evaluation of operations to establish the foundation for continuous improvement. You know, anybody could put that on their door, their business, and that's how you operate. So, so we think we do pretty good, but we already know we have a lot to improve and, and this gives us a lot of detail of, of how to improve. I'm just gonna read you a few little excerpts out of what we've gleaned so far. By the way, what, what my plan is, is to give you a staff report, how we're gonna divide this, because even if we never, if you never vote to spend the funds to do the accreditation for, for a reason, if there is a reason to do that, you'll see what I'm talking about when I give you the staff report. We'll still improve greatly just by what we've done so far, so it's a win-win for us. One of the books is Community Risk Assessment Standards of Cover. Standards of Cover just means how do you divide your area and how do you respond to it? Major Criteria Documentation of Area Characteristics. Just so happens today, Captain and I and the nine eleven director, correct, right? We were doing this. The agency has a documented and adopted methodology for organizing the response areas into geographic planning zones. That's something we had planned times about three weeks and just got together today. So, you know, that's one of the things we already do, but this will give us guidelines to do better. All Hazard Risk Assessment and Response Strategies. Event, event consequence, loss and save data, that includes property, life, injury, environmental and other losses are assessed for three immediate previous years. There's a good one. So that means we're gonna have to go back through our reports and annotate things we haven't done in the past. We'll learn a lot there. Current Deployment and Performance. The agency has a documented and adopted methodology for monitoring its quality of emergency response performance for each type service within each planning zone and the total response area. Sounds like strategic planning. Plan for Maintaining and Improving Response Capabilities. The agency has documented and adopted methodology for assessing performance adequacies, consistencies, reliabilities, resiliencies and opportunities for improvement for the total response area. The other book is Fire and Emergency Services Self-Assessment. Ten Categories: Governance and Administration, Assessment and Planning, Goals and Objectives, Financial Resources, Programs, Physical Resources, Human Resources, Training and Competency, Essential Resources, External System Relationships. So that's just a sample of what we'll be doing. We'll get her done. Any questions? Got any of that? Okay, at this time then, I'm gonna introduce you to Lieutenant Joey Baxter, our training officer. He's got some things to share with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. How's everybody? Good. All right? All right. First off, I want to apologize for him not having his stats today. He reminded me about fifteen minutes ago that we dropped it last shift, so we'll have that to you next meeting, or not next meeting, but your December one, with the chief. I come to you tonight kind of to prep you for some things that we're gonna be going into next year and give you a little bit of an idea, some of the requests that's probably gonna be coming down the pipe and what they really truly mean. About ten years ago, council set forth that all your paid firefighters should be EMTs. We got the training. We really didn't do a whole lot with it for about eight years. I mean, it helped us, I'm not, I'm not gonna deny that. It's about a hundred fifty yard class. You learn a lot with it. It's allowed us to provide better care on car wrecks and things that we already previously did. However, in the last year, we've also undertaken cardiac arrest response, unresponsive patients within the corporate limits. In that time, and even in some years prior, some of the, one of the things I'm tasked with is finding out what guy, what training our guys feel they need in there, what do they feel they need more hands-on with, what do they need to learn more about, where are their weaknesses at? And also their strengths, so we're gonna add on to that as much as we can. But there's a lot of apprehension times about EMS field. Some of it is because we've had, we've had the initial class, but we've not had a lot of exposure as far as while we're on duty. It's only been what they've done outside of their day-to-day careers, their full-time career. So that is the next project I would like to work on among the paid staff. That is going to take some funds to get us some equipment more or less. That's really gonna be it because we already have a trainer. That was one of my projects I really wanted to get finished with Jerry's help and some others, even some of the others sitting up here, we, we accomplished that. And now we've got a really nice facility to do some training in, so now we need the equipment to do it and make it specific to our jobs. One of the core pieces of that is a, is something that we've been working on for about the last year with a couple of others to enhance within our community that will directly benefit these citizens up again. It goes with our cardiac arrest management skills and even the training of community citizens, business people in the use of AEDs and utilizing CPR. That's been a point of emphasis for us for the last year. We've been learning a lot about it. JP's brother, actually Rod Kimball, works for the American Heart Association, travels all over the United States, is in a lot of fantastic positions to be in meetings, cutting-edge stuff. And one of our local instructors, Brian Potter, has actually also taken part in several research forums, taught a lot of classes around the same subject, and we've been able to pick his brain as well. This is something he's wanting to move forward with locally as well. One of the biggest things with that is obviously you've got to have early access to medical care, which we are working on providing. Actually, we're already providing in the city along with Sub County EMS. You know, we're, we're responding to their first, first response role to assist them. The gold standard for CPR, cardiac arrest management, is six care providers. So if they get two crews and we get two, one, two, or three surround, we're meeting that a lot of times. Now we gotta learn how to work together. We gotta learn how to manage the arrest in the most current way, the, the way that is proven by quantitative research, you know, the City of Charlotte Fire Department, the airport in Phoenix, there's a lot of data you can read by yourself, where they're, they are literally saying, they have guys that are saying, you give me this much money to do this, your arrest survival rate will go to this. I mean, it's that much of a science. They have quantified it that well. I can't remember wholeheartedly what the number is right now. City of Charlotte's at like seventy-seven percent survival rate. And that's not just getting spontaneous circulation back, that is actually having a life after the hospital. So not saying that we can get near that here in the city if we can. It's a much smaller pool, it's a different community, but we definitely want to put some of the things in play that they have found out to work. And one of those things is, is the training that they give their members is team-based and it's also quantifiable. It's, they have mannequins and stuff that give them real-time data as to how their compressions are doing, how much downtime, how much stoppage time is in the arrest, you know, whenever guys aren't, or responders aren't actually doing what they should be doing. And that's something that's hard for an instructor to do, especially whenever you're teaching people that you work with every day. You tend to overlook bad habits, not necessarily because you want to, but just because you're used to seeing those actions. So that's, that's gonna be where a lot of our requests come in, is it'll be EMS field, it's gonna be more with the cardiac arrest management side of it and really focusing on that. Before you ask, I don't have a number. That was something I tried to work on. It's not gonna be a very large number as compared to like the training room or something like that. But it's kind of an abnormal request. I knew that for a fire department here anyways, and a lot across the United States. Actually, if you look in the CPSE manual, which I have read, it's Emergency Medical Services is right in there, it's one of the categories. So that's where we're headed. That's, that's what I wanted to talk to you a little bit about tonight, and I look forward to sharing some information with you in the future.
More to follow.
Absolutely. Yeah, actually, that's where, that's where I was gonna go on that too. Actually, I want to recognize somebody that's here, Melissa. Melissa is actually, we're working, and I can't remember the name of the group you're with, a neighbor with the service dollars at Wesley.
With Wee Lee.
Okay, she's with Wee Lee. Melissa's actually stepped up and they got a hundred carbon dioxide detectors, two hundred smoke detectors, and they're gonna be installing them in residences in and around Upper County. And most of them, all within our pursuit area, we will obviously be helping them with that. Lieutenant Glenn Davis is coordinating those efforts right now. That's huge. We've done a lot of that in recent years. They just kind of stepped up to the plate this year and said they wanted to do it and they wanted to help. Two weeks ago, I had a fire on my shift, ended up being very small in nature, we had a very quick response to it. The lady was actually woke up by her smoke detector, and I can tell you right now it saved her life. And the amount of, we were there within three minutes of dispatch, and the conditions deteriorate so bad that you couldn't see above like two feet off the floor. And she just got out. So smoke detectors change your batteries, time change. If you don't have them, call us, we'll gladly come install them for you or get you in touch with people that are doing that right now.
It is National Fire Safety and Prevention Month, right?
Yeah, yeah. Just wrapped that up, actually. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's November. Me and Bulba.
And another recent effort that Chief was wanting me to tell you about, goes right along with cardiac arrest management CPR stuff. At a local business just outside the corporate limits, there was a cardiac arrest in this last year, where the person had a very great outcome come out of it. That is in no part to their business actually having AEDs on site and train people to administer CPR, which is exactly what we're trying to bring into the community and make it wholesale. So that's, that's what we're doing, and I look forward to answering those questions then, Tom.
Thanks, Joey.
Thanks, Joey. Thank you.
Got us down there to be safe for us. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that takes us to, down to correspondence and information. You've got a, a bunch of different stuff. You have the West Virginia Public Service Commission filing concerning our sewer rate increase. I signed off on the tariff forms earlier today. The report of the zoning board of appeals. There is a item there from St. Joseph's Hospital and their grassroots advocacy team. There is an Office of State Auditor Notice of Approved Contract for our audit. There's a proclamation that I did last week for Alpha Delta Kappa. There are a couple of new thank yous, one from Harbor Freight and one from the Buchanan Community Theater cast and crew regarding the October twentieth, twenty-first showings of the Rocky Horror Picture Show. So all informational. It's always nice when we get thank yous.
Harbor Freight one was especially a few.
Yeah, yeah. They, they do, oh, thirty or so projects around the country every year, and they've been added for decades, and they have indicated that the best experience they've ever had is the one that they have been experiencing here in Buchanan with our staff. So Alby Lowe's soon, not stealing the thunder of the Development Authority, but Harbor Freight is coming and it's gonna be a terrific addition to Buchanan. Consent agenda, several items. There's the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting from October nineteen. They're pretty short because you guys didn't do a darn thing. The approval of the building and wiring permits, the approval of the payment of our bills, and then we've had several resignations of various commission members. Jack Rager and Robert Osborne have both stepped down from the Planning Commission. I'm not asking you to fill those slots tonight, but I'm asking you to start thinking about nominees to replace those folks. Harold Cunningham, after several years of service on our Fire Civil Service Commission, is moving to the Beckley Bluefield area, taking a new job. So that is the city appointment to the Fire Civil Service Commission, so we're gonna need to figure out who can fill that void. I would remind the council that with Police Civil Service Commission and Fire Civil Service Commission, there's a delicate political balance there. You can't have three Republicans or three Democrats. So we'll, we'll do a little research and shoot out to you who this person needs to be. If the other two members are each Democrat and Republican, then this third person could be anything. But if the other two are Democrats or Republicans, then we'd have to go a different direction. Bob Flesher has essentially retired as a vet, and he believes that someone that's still practicing ought to be on our Animal Care and Control Commission. So be thinking about those vacancies, and perhaps as early as the meeting on the sixteenth. Let me know so we can get it on the agenda by that Monday, the thirteenth, that you've got somebody you want to nominate, and we'll go from there. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda, including the acceptance of those four resignations, Jack Rager Planning Commission, Harold Cunningham, Fire Civil Service Commission, Bob Flesher Animal Care and Control Commission, and Robert Osborne Planning Commission.
Same motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. May I have a second?
Second motion.
I have a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there any discussion on any of those consent agenda items? Hearing of the need for no discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The minutes will reflect that that motion passed unanimously. It takes us down to strategic issues for discussion and/or vote. And first up is Resolution twenty seventeen dash thirteen, which is the gateway of West Support Resolution. Let me locate that and we'll read it by caption. Oh, Susan's bailing me out here. This would be Resolution number twenty seventeen dash thirteen of the Council of the City of Buchanan, formally offering its support. offering its support for the engineering, design, and surveying phase of the Gateway West Transportation Alternatives Sidewalk and Lighting Improvement Project. I would entertain a motion that we approve this resolution. I have a motion by Mr. Rylands. May I have a second to his motion? Council Lady Capari has seconded it. Is there any discussion on the motion? Everybody knows Gateway West is the other side of the courthouse. And we're very optimistic that we're going to get some big news about the construction phase of this very soon. Okay.
Well, we need to sign, but...
Discussion on the motion? Let's, no discussion. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Did I do that already?
No, but I was just wondering if...
Yeah, we'll do a roll call vote after we pass the resolution. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, and the shitty recorder will call the roll.
David McCauley here. Pamela Capari.
Yes.
CJ Rylands.
Aye.
Mary Alba.
Aye.
Robert Skinner?
Yes.
The Third.
Yes.
And David Thomas.
Yes.
All right. Is this the original one?
This is the original. I'm going to pass it.
Before you sign the original, I know the one in the packet doesn't have you.
I signed it, I signed at the bottom as a certificate of enactment after they all signed.
Your vote is a number seven.
You bet up on Ambi.
We're going to add seven and put a line there. It says Susan Alba.
Thanks, Tom. I get to sign it twice.
City Recorder.
Yes.
So, anyway, we'll pass this along for you to sign, and Dave, I'll help you sign it later. You just need to be careful, you sign in the right column, because there's a column for in favor and a column for opposed.
You should have signed in the left column.
Yeah, sign in the left column. It's not just your signature this time, you have to sign under in favor or opposed.
All right.
Give me, give me after the...
Yeah, your name's typed in there, sign right above your name.
I'll start on the next thing while that's being circulated. City of Buchanan's request from Arts 26201 and the Mountain Arts District to become a governmental sponsor of the Mountain Arts District. I was invited to a meeting, oh gosh, end of September, first of October, somewhere in that timeframe. It wasn't in time to put on the agenda for the October meeting when I was here, and I wanted to be able to explain a little bit about it, so we didn't put it on the October 19th agenda either. But the meeting was about their needs for funding assistance to help promote the arts in their five county area, which I'm trying to remember. It's Tucker, Pocahontas, Randolph, Upsher, and Barber, I believe. I think those are the five counties. They are...
Taylor.
They wanted to come.
Is it Taylor, St. El Barre?
Taylor.
Is it Taylor?
And Barber, I'm sorry, it's six.
Six county? I thought it was five county. Six county? All right, well, excuse me, Tom, anyway.
You were mostly right.
Yeah, if the paper's probably in our packet, we can look at it, huh?
I've had three wives that have used that phrase sometimes.
You're mostly right.
I would, Dave Thomas, he's got more than that.
Oh, my gosh.
Anyway, to cut to the chase, they've asked us to contribute, it would be an annual payment to, they're going to help us, but we've got to help them in the process. They want to help us with promotion of our theater and things of that sort. They have some grant writing capabilities, and it will help us with many different things in the arts. Further, they're going to help Arts 26201. The annual fee is $500 for a corporate or a governmental sponsorship. You know, it's about forty bucks a month to, I think it's a good gang for our buck, a good bang for our buck, and we can revisit this next year if we feel like it's not been a good thing for us to participate in, we will reconsider it definitely.
Dave, are they soliciting money from the county commission?
They are, they are. I recommended that they go to all of their counties and cities, and that would be a big...
I, okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I have a question. When you say "they" and "they," I understand what the Mountain Arts District is, I saw the presentation at the Artistry Hall, I get that. I don't understand the, why we're supporting Art 26201 to join instead of the city.
The city, the city will be the member.
Well, why is Art 26201 in there?
They're already a member. Art 26201 asked us, along with the, she sponsored Art 26201 Mountain Arts District, they're asking...
We're not sponsoring them as members of the Mountain Arts District.
No, we will be the member, that's correct. Art 26201 is already a member.
We're governmental sponsor for Art...
Governmental sponsorship for Mountain Arts District, that's correct.
What's the organizational structure, David, as far as...
I have that. All I know about that.
There's a flyer in the packet that describes all of their good stuff, how they promote the arts, and some of their accomplishments, and all that good thing. So I would entertain, yes, question ready?
I was going to answer, David. David, I'm a former board member from that organization. They do quite a bit grassroots. They go into different communities, they do teaching, grant writing, as well as cross-promoting of the different events that different art groups are doing.
Are these volunteer individuals?
It's all voluntary. Nobody gets paid, except I think the AmeriCorps gets a start.
They have a very cool website. The artist register, and their goods are displayed there and can be sold through there. It's very, very cool.
It's a regionalization to try to create a network in this east-central part of the state.
Is that our monkeys?
I was impressed with their presentation, and they schmooze Buchanan a little bit, too. So anytime you get compliments, you tend to be more positively reactive to people asking you for something, so. But it's my recommendation that we do this. So, may I have a motion? This is Alba that has made the motion. May I have a second to our motion?
Sir.
I have a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there any further discussion on the motion to expend $500 to become a governmental sponsor of the, yeah, I lost my place.
Mountain Arts.
Mountain Arts District. Hearing of the need for no further discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The minutes will reflect that that motion also carries unanimously. Takes us down to the first reading of Ordinance 421, which is revisions to our animal care and control ordinance. Tom, do you want to address that for us?
I will take that to. This ordinance was presented in draft form at our last meeting, where we discussed some of the provisions, that we can discuss those again after members of the council feel necessary. Let me just find it here in my packet. The purpose of the ordinance is to change the composition of the animal care, well, it has a few purposes. The biggest one is to change the composition of the Animal Care and Control Commission slightly, in that there will be on that, on the board, a representative of the Lewis Upsher Animal Control Facility, and it removes the requirement that a practicing veterinarian serve on the commission, and gives the option to the city council of appointing a practicing veterinarian or a second representative of the Lewis Upsher Animal Control Facility. And that would be up to the council to determine based upon individuals who are willing to serve. The other primary changes, the fourth and fifth members of the commission would not be restricted to residents of the, within the municipal boundaries, but could be any residents within Upsher County. The other, I believe that was really the, I believe that was really the only issue that the, that this ordinance changed with respects to the commission as it currently exists. In all other respects, the previous animal care and control ordinances, numbers 300 and 397, will remain in full force and effect and not affected by this ordinance.
I think...
Yeah, there was some, oh, sorry.
Maria can speak to this, too. We've had occasional issues with qualms because of Bob Flesher's retirement, and one of the organizations just simply did not want to participate on the commission. So we were down a couple of members, and if one of the other three couldn't be there for whatever reason, we weren't able to have a meeting. So I think what you're going to see after we reconstitute this commission is there will be other substantive requests, I wouldn't call it gutting the ordinance, but some tweaking here. We want to constitute the commission fully first before we vet those tweaking. Is that a fair synopsis, Maria?
Did I say close?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that is perfect.
So that's what this is all about.
And I should say that the existing members of the commission that are on there now will continue in place for their appointed term, unless that term has run.
Yeah, it'd be subject to the annual reappointment by the city council.
Right, but if there's somebody on there right now whose term has not yet expired, they will remain on there until their reappointment. So this doesn't annihilate the existing board and start over a new one. It just makes changes to the character of the appointees, and any current members of the board will remain members of the commission, will remain members of the commission.
Exactly what we intended.
I guess my only question would be is, we have one member who's currently a non-voting member, who would qualify as a voting member if this passes. I don't know, would that change, or do we have to wait for the appointment?
Well, we've got to wait for the two readings of the ordinance, and then 30 days after that is when we can reconstitute the actual members.
I know, we have to.
Yeah, so we're talking first of the year, in time for our January meeting. So everybody understands what we're doing? We're not gutting the ordinance, we're just changing a couple of the members of the commission so that we can evolve to more regular qualms. I would entertain a motion that we approve Ordinance 421 on its first of two readings.
Same move.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. May I have a second to his motion?
Second.
I have a second by Council Lady Alba. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing of the need for none, I will call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Ambi, you want to tell us about the Request for Proposal Technical Support Computer Networking?
Yes. Okay, so the full Request for Proposal is in your packets. It's about six pages, so I don't want to go through every detail, but that can give you an idea of what's going on here. The vendor we've used for the past several years, actually, ever since we've ever had a computer system, we use them for the computer and network support, but they're no longer offering that service. So, this will probably be, the people we select will be probably be somewhat of a long-term relationship because they'll become pretty intimate with all of our inner workings, our data, a lot of very technical and pure information that they'll be, have access to. So, we thought it would be best just to set out an RFP to seek solicitation from any companies that might be interested in it, so.
Do you want to explain just briefly the evolution, the metamorphosis of MPL, just so everybody's clear about that? We had a longstanding relationship with the principal players at MPL, and in the recent months, they have changed the way in what they do business-wise.
Yeah, some of their key personnel that actually, younger people, you know, this is an older company, it was here when I first came to City Hall, and they had a, they have a computer networking system, and they take care of all sorts of things. But one of the things they took care of was management of our computer system. They helped us select our computer system, our software, different things. And as we've evolved over the years, they, their key personnel decided to move in, I think, to just another younger company maybe. But we're there, and we have to have network and technical support for our computers. We have about 90 computers in the city's eight different departments, and we've got around 40 different security cameras, body cameras, monitoring systems, towers. It's become way more complex than when I first came here and knew everything was done all type fighter. So, I asked Rich Clemmons to help write the RFP. He is a professor that understands all of the very technical things of our system.
Who'd you say, Ambi?
Richard Clemmons.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's on staff.
Sure.
For Pittmans to help us on things like this, and he's great. He wrote up a great proposal, and scope of services that we want to include is monitoring and networking administration and support, periodic security audits, maintenance of antivirus software, security and emails, support and backup of our data. We do some backup here and off-site backup, support of new hardware and software installations, assisting and planning of major enhancements and upgrades, preventive maintenance, and we want the successful vendor to do an internal initial assessment of the current computer inventory and software, and then review this each January one so that we can allow for the necessary budgets that we might have to have if there's a new software that we need, if we need to upgrade another computer system. Anybody soliciting, of course, will have to go through background, not soliciting, whoever the successful vendors will have to get a background check. And formal proposals will be received here by November 15th at noon. I won't put, I don't want to, if you approve me to advertise this, I don't want to put the full proposal in the newspaper because it's six and a half pages long, but I'll make it short, and then copies of detailed information will be available on our website.
Maybe I, I think you should give it a little bit longer timeline than...
I can do that. The people I'm using now, we don't have a contract with, we're using them on an as-needed basis. So I'd like to get a contract to vendor in here as quickly as I can.
Yeah, I just think that is two weeks and a half.
I can do, I can, we can go a little longer. I'd rather wait, then, if you don't want to do it the 15th, wait until the holidays.
Our next, December 7th, you'd like to be in a position to make a recommendation by the first meeting in December.
Yes, then, at least by the...
So maybe through November 30 then, or December 1, something like that?
That sounds good. November 30 sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, let me just change that down.
Does that meet your... Yeah, I just think it's a pretty extensive opportunity for companies, they have to take a serious look at it.
I'd also like you to select a selection committee of at least maybe three. I'd like to be on it, I'd like you to point Rich on it, and then anyone else you'd want to have on it to review the vendor.
Counsel? I certainly concur with Ambi, and Ambi's nominees are her and Mr. Clemmons, they know our system best. Any of you want to serve on the committee?
I'd be willing to help, I haven't done that stuff for years.
If you don't want to do it tonight, you can do it the next council meeting if you want to.
That's good, get it placed, because you didn't really do that ad, and you guys can act as a body on it. Mr. Thomas, you want to serve on that?
Yeah, I'll be going with him.
All right. So, are we good with nominating as our committee to get this ball, well, it's not just rolling, we've already got the RFP, but to further the process, to make recommendations back to us as to a hire? Ambi Jenkins, Rich Clemmons, and Dave Thomas. Are we good with that? I'd entertain a motion to that effect. I have a motion by Council Lady Alba. Do you want to second that?
You should, no, go ahead and get your second, then I'll ask a question.
Okay, why don't you second?
Well...
Would you want to arm wrestle Thomas to be on it?
No, I don't really want to second it, because I...
Okay, I'll second it. I have a second by Mr. Rylands. Now, is there a discussion on the motion, Mr. Skinner?
What you're motioning is, or what you're requesting for a motion is appointing this committee?
To Dave Thomas, Ambi Jenkins, and Rich Clemmons to oversee the process and to come
back with a recommendation after we have published the ad.
Okay.
And they'll identify all the interested parties, if there are multiple parties, and explain their rationale to us.
Okay.
As we evolve... As we evolve to a decision.
I see, okay.
Are you good with that?
Yes.
Yeah, we will, we will do the selecting, we'll give you the mention.
It'll come back to the council and we'd have to act upon their recommendation. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
I'm going to abstain from this because there is a conflict of interest with the current provider here.
You can abstain when we?
I just want to be out of the process because I, being in my profession, I need to stay, you know.
And I recuse myself, so I won't.
Why are you recusing yourself?
How can you be on the board then?
I didn't want to vote for you.
Mr. Thomas?
I didn't want to vote for him.
You don't want to vote for, no, no, no.
That's not a conflict.
It's not a conflict.
Okay, then I won't recuse myself. Just wanted to make sure that.
Okay. So is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for no further discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. And we'll note that Mr. Skinner has abstained.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. That takes us down. Ambie, anything else on the RFP front?
No, but I'll stay here, but they just don't have me up here at the end.
We'll run the ad through, while anybody interested has to let us know by November 30th.
Yep.
Hiring of parking office personnel, Morgan Clutter.
We're not going to do that tonight.
The hiring, Morgan Clutter has served us very well. She came aboard last October, I guess, something like that. So she has, she's going back to school. She's going to be a full-time student. She's been a joy to have here with our operation and she's gangbusters. She helps out in the theater and she's pleasant and she just.
Engineering.
Yeah, she wants to go back and do her degree. So as of December 21st, 2nd, something like that.
23rd.
She said she'd come to the Christmas party. But after that, we're going to need somebody else in her position. And Ambie and I had a discussion and we said we better put it on the agenda and let the council act upon this. We'd like to restart the process that we went through last August, September to hire the parking enforcement officer. We've got to hire another one.
Yep.
So I would entertain a motion that we start this process and that we authorize Ambie and myself to draft an appropriate ad and to get the feeler out there so that maybe, perhaps as soon as the first of the year, we'll have somebody in place again.
I hope to, honestly, I need to have them into Morgan Lee's because she developed that, well, she actually wrote that program to track those vehicles.
We'd want to fast-track this. By December 7th, we'll have somebody. I have a motion by Council Lady Albaugh. May I have a second or a motion?
Second.
I think I heard Ryland's a tad before Skinner. He says he can have it. Wow, what a guy. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That takes us down to comments and announcements. And Council Lady Albaugh, your first up.
Okay, a couple of things. I want to remind everybody about the Veterans Day celebration coming up on November the 11th. That's a Saturday. The combined, wait, back up. The American Legion Post 7, then the VFW will be having different programs here this year. And the parade route's going to start at same place, lineup. You need to contact us at the American Legion, 304-460-7377. And that's been advertised to enter the parade so you'll know where you're going to be at, okay? The parade route will end at a beautiful place called Jawbone Park where the Walk of Valor is. And that's where it's going to end. And the same evening, the American Legion in conjunction with the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Elizabeth Zane chapter, and the Ladies Auxiliary of Post 7 are going to be serving all veterans. You don't have to be a member of the Legion or the VFW or the DRR, DR. All veterans plus one guest, a spaghetti dinner that night at the Legion. And, or that afternoon, 5 o'clock till 6:30. So anyways, we hope to see all of you out there waving your American flag. If you don't have an American flag, come see me over at the American Legion and I'll give you one. So we really appreciate it.
In the keynote speaker, you spared no expense this year.
And this year, we, I didn't have to beg or barry or anybody. David volunteered.
They asked me, how can you say no to?
Just for the program over at the, over there. And of course, I'd love to see all you, all of you on the sidelines this year.
Yeah, we'll be there.
Throwing darts at David.
Anything else?
What a pleasure.
There was, there was one other thing.
One other thing, here we go. This is what takes these meetings into the we hours.
I don't know. There you go.
If you think of it, we'll give it back to you. Council Lady Capery, what do you got for us?
I have nothing to say.
Wow. Mr. Rylands?
I'll pass myself.
Wow. Mr. Skinner?
I'll pass.
Give it to Tom.
David, keep it short, buddy.
I'm going to have to fill the void here in a couple of minutes. Mr. Thomas, what do you have for us?
Well, the only thing I have is on December the 2nd, there's going to be a fundraiser for pets, our furry friends.
True.
And it's going to, you know, maybe Maria can shed a little bit more light on it, but it's semi-formal, is it Maria?
Yeah, it's semi-formal. Enjoy it as tough as you want. It's, the dog park is partnering with Love for Animals. It's a fundraiser dance party at the 88. Tickets will be on sale next week.
And that's a Saturday, is that correct?
It's a Friday.
December the 2nd, yes.
It's a Friday or Saturday?
The 30th is a Thursday. The 2nd is a Saturday. Saturday is a Saturday.
It is, December 2nd is Saturday.
Christmas parade, Friday the 1st.
Friday night, it's the Christmas parade.
Friday's the Christmas.
Friday, December 1st.
And if you can't make it to, if you can't make it to the dance, you know, you can always contribute to the city to help out our furry friends.
Absolutely. Anything else, David?
That's it.
Dr. Susan Allo?
Nothing.
Wow.
Enjoy my short term.
In Lincoln.
And she did a wonderful job. Let's give her a hand.
Short time, but it gives her a head.
Restart a campaign.
I got three or four real quick bullet points and then a short statement to read.
That's what.
Barking dogs. I've had two different complaints and, you know, if you've got a dog that's next door to you, there's a process. You come down to City Hall and Teresa Summers will help you fill out a complaint. But it's very difficult. Somebody calls about a barking dog, the comm center dispatches a police officer to the site. The person that has the barking dog has a police scanner. They bring the dog in and by the time our cops get there, there's no barking dog. And we go through this exercise over and over. So, but the alternative to just calling the police and interrupting the folks at the comm center is come down and file a complaint. There's a procedure for this. It's covered under our animal care and control ordinance. Call City Hall, we'll try to help. We understand those annoyances. The waste collection board met earlier today and we have had, we thought we had a second incident in a matter of a few short months that was going to result in some asbestos-laden material being sort of snuck into our transfer station. We had to put a hold on a major load out there that disrupted our operation for a few hours. We did testing, we brought the DEP in, EPA was involved, all kinds of state, federal agencies get all wound up over these things. And it turned out that it was a property owner who hadn't gone through the proper channels to have the asbestos inspection, no raising permit. We got to figure out a way to up the ante on folks that are disrupting our municipal activities and bringing state and federal folks in. My recommendation is that I be permitted to work with Tom O'Neill to come up with some language. Anytime you do something, that you're making something a criminal action, it has to be done by ordinance. So I'd like to look at a process whereby, and I'm not looking to send anybody to jail, but $500 fine or something like that, that would be a deterrent against this types of activity. Mary, you are council member of Waste Collection Board that I chair. Did I, did I describe that correctly?
You did, you did. And it's just like you said, this is not the first time it's happened recently.
Second time in the last six months.
Right. So the, those that are not following the rules need to, and it cost us money. It could have cost us a lot of money, a lot of money. And I think that we need to have something like that in place.
So you endorse this?
Certainly do. And so we talked about it with Jerry and to Jeff today at the board meeting.
This matter is not on the agenda this evening, but we will place it on the agenda for a strategic matter to get your vote of support so that we can then work with Tom O'Neill to draft the necessary ordinance. But I wanted to give you a heads up about it coming down the pipe.
And we supported Jerry Arnold last time this happened too.
Absolutely.
Yes, we did.
Absolutely. The other thing we need to do as we evolve down this process of hiring our information officer, grant writer, researcher, we need to schedule a special meeting for Monday, November 13. We will adjourn into executive session at 6:00 PM on Monday, November 13 to conduct a, at least a first wave of interviews for possible hires of that position. So please put that on your calendars, again, Monday, November 13. Some numbers I want to mention. Pause one second for our train. Susan Allo, I've been running this meeting, the train will have already been on.
I want to say, yeah, I want to say.
It's got cold, it's a good thing.
Some numbers generated over the last day are 5,000, 72,000, 2 million. What's the common denominator? We got a check yesterday, the actual check came in today from Arc 26201 for $5,000 to help us with our theater project. Brian Shreves talked about the $72,000 in value for the dual-band radios. And this effort to facilitate the Atlantic Coast Pipeline Project will result in about $2 million in improvements to our water system. That's all free money, folks. That's serious stuff. So that's $2,077,000 in what are essentially new grants. My closing statement, I'll keep it quick. We're blessed to live in a community where our residents and employees are extremely community-minded. I'd like to observe several things that have gone on here in Buchanan just in the past month that bear evidence to that. First, just yesterday, I was pleased to be involved in two events that demonstrated our citizen's support of good things. Arc 26201 presented our city with a check of $5,000, for $5,000 toward improvements to our Colonial Theater project. Our restored marquee will be going up very soon now and in advance of the holidays, thanks to Arc 26201. Last evening, I was asked to participate in a tribute to the late David Taylor Jr. and the BU Camera Club. Our camera club purchased a flag for David and we had a very nice ceremony. We have about 200 flags toward the 600 goal now purchased. Our cemetery is the prettiest one around. This Sunday from 9:00 to 3:00, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, several city employees and I will volunteer our time working side by side with Wesleyan Fraternity and Sorority members and the local Boy Scouts to clean graves at Heffner Cemetery. Speaking of the Colonial Theater, in case you missed the Rocky Horror Picture Show presentation on October 20 and 21, it couldn't have happened without our stalwart city employees who worked overtime to bring the new floor together. A floor that now, by the way, supports 400,000 pounds of weight, that's 200 tons. This facility will be an amazing addition to our downtown when it's completed. We thank Buchanan Community Theater's members for duly entertaining us. We came together as a community to honor substantial contributors of our past. Ross Straight on October 26, Charles Warfield on October 15. Please check out the new bio signs on Baxter Street and in Jawbone Park. The new floodlight shining on Bakanga Halis and Mahonagon is magnificent. The shadows cast by our Native Americans throughout Jawbone Park are indescribable. Our employees collaborated to honor Gray Barker on October 27 with a scary-eyed extraterrestrial and two flying saucers. On October 28, our Stagger Youth Center and a number of our city employees volunteered their weekend time to put on the inaugural Haunted River Trail event. Especially want to thank Ambie Jenkins and Deborah Brogdon. On October 30th, it was employee-sponsored trunk-or-treat in our public safety complex lot. Lurch has now been joined by cousin it. Our folks work hard, but they know how to play hard too. In a couple of weeks, new holiday banners and Christmas lights will be going up again. Everything we do as an organization is attributed to the excellent work of our employees. Please make a point to thank them for their outstanding work. The "we" and "we're all in it together" just keeps getting bigger and bigger. Thanks to you all for coming out this evening and we'll see you on November 16.
Do you want to motion to the chairman?
I would entertain a motion to a chairman.
Good.
Skinner, Ryland, discussion on the motion. Call for the question. All those in favor of the chairman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are.